Thank you all so much for being with us this evening. I want to start with an introduction to New Orleans City Council. And since we have so many council members, our people who are vying to be a part of the council joining us today, I want to make sure that I just go straight through this. The New Orleans City Council really plays an enormous role in deciding how much Entergy New Orleans and our new gas utility, Delta Utilities, can charge its customers, how much they can charge us, how much the utilities can profit, and the kind of energy that powers our city, and how resilient our energy systems are when the next storm hits. So the seven council members elected this fall will make decisions about energy issues that will affect every single one of us, like whether to grant Entergy another rate increase, what energy efficiency and weatherization programs are available to help you lower your monthly bill, and what bill assistance programs are available if you can't afford your bills. So what rules govern our community solar program, how much we're investing into our grid to withstand storms, and really so much more. Now, these are the issues that hit home every single month. This election is about more than politics. It is really about whether our families can afford to keep the lights on. So the goal of this forum is to provide residents an opportunity to hear from the candidates themselves about how they intend to use their power to improve our energy system and keep the lights on and to make bills more affordable. Just a reminder that this is not a debate, this is a forum. It is an opportunity for everyone to share with them their plans to help keep your lights on. So we want to begin with an introduction of the candidates. I want to start all the way down here at the end, and we can walk on up. And each candidate has about, what is it, 30 seconds to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Amy McCarron, running for City Council, District A. And I'm born and raised here, and I'm running because I love this city and I want to make this a great place to live again. And I look forward to serving you as your next council member for District A. Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me. My name is Alex Mossing. I am running for City Council, District A. I am a native New Orleanian, lifelong resident of my district, and for the last 15 years I've been teaching social studies in New Orleans public schools. I look forward to sharing some of my thoughts with y'all and look forward to improving New Orleans for all of us. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Morell, and I'm running for City Council to put people first. I was running a charity hospital 40 years ago. I'm of, by, and for the working class people here in this city. And at the end of the day, when it comes to our affordability crisis, our energies crisis is at the root of it all. And so for me, making sure we put people before profits is critical to overregulation for our utilities. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matt Hill. I'm running for Council at Large D1. And does anybody here want lower electricity prices? Yeah, there's only one way to do it. I will take back our power lines, I will municipalize them, and I will bring in three to five competitors against Entergy, and we will bust up this monopoly. And I will also bust up our brand-new monopoly that we call Delta Utilities. If you want a better city, we got to start knocking out these monopolies, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Willard. Currently, I'm a state representative for District 97. I've been in the legislature for six years. I've passed 36 bills to prioritize problem-solving for the people in the city of New Orleans. I'm running for Council at Large because it is way too difficult and way too expensive to call the city of New Orleans home. My focus is to make sure that we all are excited to work, live, and raise a family, and that's what this campaign is about. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Cutnow. My number is 31. I was born in New Orleans. I'm a graduate of Southern University with a degree in political science. I have 30 years in government, running government agencies. I have secured millions and millions of dollars for the community, for housing, economic development. And I really believe that we need strong leadership to regulate Entergy. Over the last two years or four years, our utility bill has went up by $200. We cannot continue on raising and affording this type of living.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend Gregory Manning. I'm running for City Council at Large. I'm running because the cost of living in New Orleans is way too high. Utilities are unaffordable, housing is unaffordable, and our infrastructure is failing us. Let's start with utilities. Let's wipe out all debt owed to Entergy New Orleans. Let's ban all shut-offs. And finally, let's make sure that we do not vote for any Delta Utility rate hikes or fees so that we can make New Orleans not only lovable but livable. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elliot Barron, the Green Party candidate for City Council, District C. I'm running for left-wing values at this critical time, and it's an opportunity to send a message to the state, the country, the world where our priorities are. Unfortunately, I have to go to work tonight on the streets of the West Bank, but I will leave you in the hands of my capable colleagues, also from the West Bank, also running for District C. You're in good hands. We're going to be all right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Foster. I'm running for New Orleans City Council, District C. I have over 15 years of experience working in public policy, economic development, and community advocacy. I've been a neighborhood president. Most recently, I have had the honor to serve as the Executive Director of the Algiers Economic Development Foundation, where I've helped to create jobs for our youth, work with our small businesses, and try to attract affordable housing to our communities. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jackson Kimble. I'm running for City Council, District C. I'm number 41 on your ballot. I live in Algiers. I'm an Army veteran and work for a general contractor in the construction industry. I'm running for reliable, affordable, and renewable energy in our city to power us for another 300 years. I look forward to speaking with y'all, and thank y'all for having me.
My name is Reverend Richard Bell, number 47 on your ballot, member of ACLU, member of NAACP Certified Equal Opportunity, past American Legion Commander. Delta should have never came in. I don't know the corporate offices in Dallas. I thought we stayed in Louisiana. I would fight for the rights of the people, not for the money, I'm for the community. And I mean, we would get this reeback on map. Thank you.
My name is Danielle Christmas. I'm running for City Council, District E, which is New Orleans East and the Lower Ninth Ward. I'm running on the basis of progressive workers, a mother. I'm running as a failed daughter of the education system. I'm running for the, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, y'all. But I'm running for the child who's been failed by the justice system. I'm running because I've been failed by the justice system, the education system, and I'm tired of being failed. I call New Orleans the safety kit. We put a bandit over everything. We don't prioritize our people. I'm running because we need to take corporate greed out of politics. One more thing, we need to get politicians out of the pockets of energy. That's why I'm running.
Good afternoon, community. My name is Jonathan Anthony Roberts, the only candidate with three names on your ballot, number 57, running for City Council, District E. Reminder, early voting starts on the 27th. Little educational background, business with a concentration in economics, emergency environmental management, and homeland security. Our bills are way too high, and New Orleans is a streaking city, and we need someone that cares about and is going to take care of us. Vote Jonathan Anthony Roberts on the 27th, number 57 on your ballot. Thank you.
My name is Willie Morgan. I'm a candidate for District E. I'm number 54 on your ballot. I am an educator, a community activist. I'm no stranger to hard work. I've been fighting for my community since I completed undergrad in 2012, so I'm humbly asking for your support. I got in this race to fight for the people of District E. For far too long, we have been overlooked and overshadowed, and it's definitely time to change that. So again, thank you. My name is Willie Morgan, number 54 on the ballot.
Really great to see many of you guys here. My name is Cindy Nguyen, number 55 on your ballot. While in office from 2018 to 2022, I make sure that families in District E has access to assistance to keep their lights on. I'm running again because we still have a lot of work to do in District E. I'm refreshed, excited about the opportunity, taking my B-12 for the past three and a half years. I am smarter and more strategic now to continue to serve the people in District E. Love to have your support. Thank you.
Good evening. How you doing? I'm Bell Dinooneyman-Baptiste, number 43 on the ballot. I'm running because it's time for a change in the city of New Orleans. The people are hurting, the people are suffering, and we didn't try to put people in the council, but it's time for a change. And I'm going to hold energy accountable, because energy get away, because it's a monopoly of money, giving us excuses, and also Delta Utilities shouldn't have never came. And I'm excited to see all these new candidates running, because I think if we vote all these new candidates in, we can change it. And when you got trouble on your hand, call that councilman, Nuno Man.
Hi, I'm Leilani Hino. I was born and raised here in New Orleans. I'm a seasoned business owner. I've created hundreds of jobs. I've improved the quality of life for thousands of New Orleanians. My degrees are in marketing, management, finance, and statistics. I have a master's in business, and I'm a Goldman Sachs graduate. I'm running because we're not functional, and I want to put functional systems in place for our city. I'm humbly asking for your vote for City Council, District D. Already, we got out of line, so I'm Leilani Hino, running for City Council, District D. Thank you.
All right, we have an introduction of all of our candidates. Again, this is going to be a forum, and with each question, you will receive one minute to respond. You will hear that little ding right there. Ding, okay. Show business. You will hear that little ding, and that will be your signal to please wrap up your statement so that we can get to the next candidate to give their answer. So we're going to begin in the same order that we had you all do introductions. Listen to this first question, and please let me know if you do need me to request the, if you do need me to say the question again. And I'll begin with Ms. Amy McCarron. That question will go around to everyone. Last year, the council approved the sale of Entergy's gas system to Delta Utilities, a private equity-backed company whose sole business is selling fossil fuels. Now, New Orleanians have yet another utility company in bill to keep track of. Given the health climate and cost risk of using gas, what steps would you take to reduce New Orleans' dependence on fossil fuels and ensure an equitable transition away from gas? Again, the same direction. We begin with Amy. 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. So the current council has passed a series of laws, like LEED-certified buildings, clean vehicles for our city fleet, and city, clean city operations, but that actually hasn't moved forward. So that is an open docket currently with this current council, and I would push to move that forward as one of our top priorities. The other thing is, is that we should, we need to fix RTA so we can stop relying on so many vehicles, make it more accessible to people, public transit, and then electrify those vehicles. The other thing is, we need to configure our Energy Smart program so that we can actually incentivize electrification across the city. So that could mean incentivizing restaurants to use induction stoves. We can also provide incentives for people to have solar power and batteries across the city. That way, there's, we have, are less reliant on our gas generators that are currently powering when the power goes out. Thank you.
When I think about natural gas, and Delta Utilities in particular, I think about what we are using natural gas in our homes for. And that is usually water heating, house heating, and then stoves. So if we're thinking about how we're going to reduce the use of those particular resources at our houses, we need to think about what the alternatives are and how we can make those more affordable and more accessible to everyone. So first of all, I think it'd be great if we could provide incentives for people to choose electric appliances whenever possible. On the other hand, what we need to make sure that we are providing, if we are encouraging that through incentives or other types of programming, is that our electric expenses are not higher than our gas costs, because that is a barrier, and this would be encouraging people to incur more of an affordability crisis. So I would say, first of all, we need to be thinking about how we can help especially our lower-income homeowners replace their gas-powered electronics, or gas-powered appliances with electronic-powered appliances, and then also make sure that we have the workforce development in place to service those when they are in disrepair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously, the profit incentive is one of the reasons why we sold our natural gas distribution to Delta, which is, again, vulture capitalist-funded, and their whole business model is to have more people using more natural gas. The reason why natural gas is so bad is because of its chemical composition and its effect on our heat, right? So obviously, we need to reduce the amount of natural gas usage by making sure people are switching. I would actually hope that Entergy would pay like they should be doing for all the services that they do for us, to actually purchase electric water heaters and to try to get people away from using natural gas. We have to look at industrial usage as well. As Amy mentioned, restaurants is another one of the largest users of natural gas, so trying to move them away from natural gas usage is imperative. But at the end of the day, this is going to be a community effort, whether it's not just in our homes with natural gas, but reduction of all fossil fuelage, which we need to make sure that we are incentivizing a livable planet and a livable city. Thank you.
All right, y'all. Innovation isn't an app. Innovation is a mindset, and it's moving past problems, even though it doesn't look like we can get past them. I'm going back to what I'm saying. First things first, we have to bust up this brand-new monopoly that is Delta Utilities, because if, I think every single one of you had sticker shock when you opened up your bill and how much that fee was. We are not going to be able to just stop them from doing that. We're going to have to bring in competitors so that the market stops them from doing that. But if we want to move to solar power sidewalks, if we want to be able to drop turbines into the river where at the undercurrent, it's 70 miles an hour, we have to get there as a city council. Nobody talks about that stuff. We got to put that stuff on the docket. My name's Matthew Hill. Thank you.
Mr. Willard.
It's a very important question. The first thing that I would say is Delta is owned by Private Equity Group, which means they don't even have the same reporting requirements as Entergy. So we have to take the job of a regulator of utilities very seriously, meaning that we request reporting and make sure that Delta gives us information related to rates, related to disconnects, and so on. We also have to stop approving rate increases. So I think Delta probably acquired the natural gas business with the assumption that they'll be able to do a rate increase in a year, so we have to vote against that. And then we have to move forward with the docket that's in front of the council right now for the neighborhood power, the virtual power plant, and the community solar program to where we can actually generate our own energy. When we implement consolidated billing, it makes it more feasible. So when we're dealing with the storm, people don't have to rely on gas-powered generators. They can use the solar panels with batteries that they have attached to their homes. So that's how I would, that's how I would address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Mr. Cutnow.
When we approved the sale of Delta, it pushed us further backwards. Delta needs to be regulated. We need to make sure that today, if you look at your utility or gas bill, it's $29. We haven't got to winter yet. Can you imagine what it's going to be like in the wintertime? As a council member, I would regulate Entergy, I would regulate Delta, and I would make sure that we reduce that cost to the people, especially to our elderly and our low-income homes. I would also look at finding a way to finance more solar systems for our community, put solar batteries in the homes, solar panels on the homes, so that we can reduce some of the costs. But as a council member, I would be very strict upon Delta and Entergy to make sure that we reduce those rates, because the rates are going too high, and we just can't afford it no more. The cost of living is outrageous in the city of New Orleans.
Thank you, Mr. Cutnow. Reverend Manning.
Yeah, I want to be very clear that the sale of Delta to a private equity firm was a huge mistake. If I could shut it down tomorrow, then I would. But there is a way to get rid of it, and that is the municipalization of Delta, of our gas sector. That'll take a while, but if we get that done, if we get it under city-owned, then we can begin to decommission it. We can't do it right now, but we can if it becomes under city ownership. So let's move towards that direction. Let's also get every city-owned property electrified. Let's make sure that if there's a gas-powered generator, we get solar panels on all those city-owned properties, whether they're senior centers, whether they're the city hall. Make sure it's all no longer using fossil fuels at all. That's the plan of action. Thank you.
All right. Kelsey Foster.
The Louisiana Legislature preempted the city of New Orleans from being able to stop any new gas hookups. So we know we can't stop gas services, but we can legislate away from them as a city council. A couple of ways I would do that is by making sure that the program to subsidize commercial-grade cooking appliances in restaurants and kitchens is expanded. As an economic development director, I tried to pair those subsidies with our existing businesses in Algiers, and not a single business was eligible under the current guidelines. I would also like to make sure that we are expanding our public transit, especially in areas like Algiers and New Orleans East with far commute times. And third, I want to make sure that we are thinking about electric appliances in the city's new healthy homes ordinance. This is an ordinance that says that all rentals must be kept to a livable standard. We were hoping to have grants to assist small landlords to make the changes to their units to make, to meet these credentials. One thing we could do with these grants is incentivize electric appliances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Mr. Kimble.
So our transition away from fossil fuels will only happen if we have a community-owned electrical provider. Right now, it's owned by Wall Street, the 1%, and they're out there for profit. We've talked about Delta Utilities being owned by Wall Street, but it's the whole caboodle that's owned by people not interested in helping this city. We also need to work towards electrifying everything in this city. Our transit needs to be electrified. We need to electrify every parking lot that we have on this city needs to be covered in solar panels. The technology that we have currently is available and can produce enough power for our city to be powered in the future. We have great technologies like solar batteries, purchase power agreements where you can buy solar from an actual producer themselves. We have the technology, but it's going to have to start with owning Entergy at the community level that is built to provide reliable, affordable, and renewable energy. Thank you.
And as we go to this next row, I just want to make sure I repeat the question. Given the health climate and cost risk of using gas, and what steps would you take to reduce New Orleans' dependence on fossil fuels and ensure an equitable transition away from gas? We go now to Reverend Bell.
First, we have to stop city council from taking money from these energy places. If city council stopped taking the money, then the community will stop suffering. If you have some, write down Section 2/784. That's contribution that you don't even take from gas company, and that's happening now. So when it come to regulate a rate, the reason they rate it high, because they already got paid to do it. We need monitors in housing for carbon dioxide, because if you don't have the monitor service, you might wake up in another dimension, not here. Get the grants, stop stealing the money, and let's get to work and get the houses right.
Mr. Bell, thank you so much. Ms. Christmas.
I just want to say, all the candidates stole my answer, so I'll piggyback off of that. But first thing first, I want to understand, Energy made $16.2 billion last year. I want you to wrap your mind around that, $16.2 billion. That's off of our lean residents alone. Now, they also receive grants from the state of Louisiana, so this is a for-profit system. And so we can't regulate them if we have politicians taking money from them, so I want you to understand that. It cannot happen. If I have it on a state level and a local level and they're taking money, it won't change. So we have to be realistic. We can't make a municipal if they're taking money from it, because they're going to push back. What I'm proposing is we do a healthy homes ordinance, like Ms. Kelsey said. What we do is we make all the landlords have updated appliances. That way, we can stop using natural gases. We can also do solar system incentives, where we can have people in low-income areas. Anybody, low-income, high-income, it doesn't matter. Solar system incentives, that way they can afford their energy bill, and we don't have to decide between water, food, and lights. It's simple, I keep saying this, $1.8 billion budget. We have to kick corruption out of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Christmas. Mr. Roberts.
Good afternoon, community. Thank you for the question. So right now, we're living in a society where capitalism is failing our taxpayers. They're eating off the backs of the everyday working people, and we see that with energy. We see that now with Delta Utilities. We got families in District E that are struggling to pay bills, pay rent, and decide between childcare. We need to expand legislation when it comes to healthier climate and things that is going to be safe and energy-efficient for our families, expanding on the healthy, the healthy home ordinance, and also making sure that we are mitigating issues that the federal government is currently taking away from us, things like energy-efficient appliances. That was recently mitigated on a federal level, so on a state level, the city level, we got to make sure that we're legislating for that, so our families have those resources available to them. Now is the time, as a city, that we have to stand up, because our community is hurting and the bills are high. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for the question. First of all, anyone who has gas in their home, I think what you will know is that it's reliable during a hurricane when we have outages. So when we are trying to convince families, especially in District E, to switch over to electric appliances, of course, it'll be better for the environment. It's really difficult to do so when they're constantly having outages in their neighborhood, and it's hard to cook. A lot of people have small children. You need reliable appliances. So gas, unfortunately, right now, is more reliable than our electric grid. So we have to improve, we have to make that improvement so that families want to move over to electric appliances. We can't tell someone to do best for the environment when they can't cook at home because of a hurricane. If you live in District E in my neighborhood, you have gotten those little notifications from your alarm system quite often that's telling you that your power is out, right? So once we get that corrected, I feel more families in our city will move toward making those healthier choices for our environment.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Nguyen.
Ken, thank you for the questions, and good evening to everybody. We all know that New Orleans is on the front line of a climate crisis, and so any transition away from gas, we must prioritize equity. Looking at our vulnerable populations, senior citizens, people that are on fixed income, a couple of strategies that I really wanted to offer to the conversation is to really expand our energy-efficient programs that are helping many of our individual, particularly low-income, to transition. We all know and learn from Together New Orleans about community solar and renewable energy. I think that is amazing work in our community, and I am very committed to make sure that we support that work, because it's making an impact in our community. Green jobs, supporting and expanding green jobs and workforce training. I truly believe when we all work together with the city council, the community partners, that we will be able to build a healthier New Orleans, a New Orleans that we can all afford to live, and that more climate resilience for all of our families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Baptiste.
First thing I'll do is have Energy Smart programs, you know. One of the things I saw when I went to Together New Orleans Forum, they had a platform called the Solar Lighthouses. So I invested a lot of money in that, because I think Together New Orleans got it. I partner with a lot of groups, but old Delta, I regulate Delta, making sure that the state is coming to handle Delta right, because we know they sold Delta Utilities, and we know why they sold it, because it was the Shaw Group. And at the end of the day, I'll fight so hard to advocate, get with the experts, and see the best way is to deal with gas. And also, I'll push for a health study to make sure, like, carbon monoxide in the gas, not home in the people or nothing. And that's what I'll do. I'll fight, 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 and I don't care who's the mayor, who's the councilman. I'm bringing the smoke, I'm bringing the fire. I'm going to fight for the people like never before, because they deserve better.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Baptiste. Ms. Hino.
So when a storm happens, we have natural gas, and people come to our house because we have gas and they don't have any power. So he did make a really good point. Trying to get people to get off of gas is going to be a little difficult mindset-wise. That's why I believe solar is so important. As a business owner, I'm always looking at waste, and that's a huge thing, because we're facing a $100 million budget deficit. So some of the things that we want to happen can't always happen. So the first thing that I would do, I would redirect the funds that we're wasting now on emergency contract towards solar, towards storm-resilient infrastructure, and also to retrofit affordable housing. I would also give incentives to builders, to contractors, to make sure that this is built in the plan before they start the build. So that would be part of the system. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hino, and thank you to our candidates. That was our first round of questioning. That was our first round of questioning. Now for our second round. The question is, New Orleans has one of the highest energy burdens in the nation, with some low-income households spending as much as 28% of their income on utilities. While New Orleans has an energy-efficiency program, Entergy Smart, only about 8% of the benefits from that program go to low-income households. What would you do to make energy efficiency and cost-saving programs more accessible to low-income households and renters? Question again, what would you do to make energy efficiency and cost-saving programs more accessible to low-income households and renters? A reminder, you were given 60 seconds to respond, and we begin with Ms. McCarron.
Okay, so I know we have Energy Smart program here, and what we need to do is target through that program, make a revision of that program, and target those users that are using that energy and cost burden for that. And we can do that through a redesign with that program, and that's something the council has direct access to and can do. And we can make them provide data about that and then target it. The other thing I think that, you know, we're missing currently on this council is that we are not talking about it as council members. District council members, I've never, you know, I served as policy and budget director for Councilmember DeRusso, and I've not once heard him speak about this at a neighborhood meeting or a community meeting. And so we're also not doing a good job of talking about the programs that we have available for people in our communities. So that's something that I know I will do at every single district council meetings and as well as my community meetings, because that's how we get the information out to people. So being accessible to the community and making them aware of these programs is really our role as district council members. I also want to serve on the Utilities Committee for this reason, and as well as potentially look at chairing the Climate Committee, because this is such an important issue for our neighborhoods that we need to make sure that we, as council members, are getting this message out and prioritizing those areas.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCarron. Ms. Mossing?
The first job I ever had was working in a workforce development program with the Alliance for Affordable Energy. And what the youth were doing, 16- to 24-year-olds at that time, in the early years, immediately after Katrina, is they were being trained in green job skills like weatherization. And so they would work through the Alliance to learn how to weatherize homes, and then they would be deployed to low-income communities. We need more of that kind of creative thinking about how to use the existing resources and to address multiple needs in our city at a time. So I would certainly begin with thinking through some activities like that, using thought partners like the Alliance and other local workforce development agencies, as well as community partners who know where our low-income households are. It is very important to do targeted outreach to make sure that residents know what resources are available. Energy Smart as a program relies heavily on sort of online applications. Our elderly residents are less likely to know how to access those. So creating community spaces where we can invite those residents in and give them an opportunity to learn more about those resources and be connected with them is important. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Robert?
Mr. Bob. Mr. Bob? Thank you very much, Mr. Reese. So one of the things that has come up, obviously, is the idea of popular education, right, and making sure that people that are the most affected in this affordability crisis are the ones that are being prioritized first. I will push back a little bit on just going through neighborhood associations because there are working-class people that do not have the ability to show up to meetings like this, right? So we need to find that we're actually meeting people, number one, where they live, number two, where they work. Right now, we have a very low union density. If we're working through labor organizing, we can actually reach the people that are struggling the most where they work to make sure that they are able to keep the lights on. Most importantly, though, we have to understand that people in arrears, people in debt to Entergy and hopefully to Delta, these are people that need that access to our rental assistance, that need assistance to these types of programs, and they should automatically be enrolled in these programs. And finally, we need to make sure that all these cost-saving energy efficiencies are actually handled through our landlords. And as mentioned earlier, the Healthy Homes Ordinance is certainly an opportunity to do that. I would advocate for a rental registry as well, so that we're able to actually link up tenants that are looking for places to live with good landlords that actually take care of their houses and make sure that your bills are not skyrocketing. Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
I think everybody in this room probably knows what a regressive tax is. If you don't, regressive tax hurts the people that have the lowest amount of income. We have tried to regulate Entergy. And what happened? We smacked them with multimillion-dollar lawsuit, I mean, multimillion-dollar fine. Who paid that? You paid that. Once again, we can try to regulate all we want, but if we really, there's only one way to bring down electricity costs for everybody in this city, and that's to take back these power lines and bring in competitors. And guess what? The market will have them coming up with programs. Because if you want new windows on your house that are energy-saving, you've got a back order of about two years. Things are not going to come as quickly as we want to. That's why we've got to bust up Entergy now.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Willard?
I want to say, I don't know if we'll have closing statements. So I'm Matthew Willard. I'm running for City Council at Large Division I, ballot number 30. What I would say is, first of all, I don't think any marketing or overhead operational costs should come out of the Energy Smart program. I think all of the money should be allocated to doing what's in the best interest of the people in the city of New Orleans. Number two, we have to think about energy efficiency and understand that a lot of the people who need the most need in the city of New Orleans live in homes that cannot become energy-efficient because they have windows that don't properly close, or they have a hole in their floor or a hole in their roof. So we need to utilize Energy Smart dollars to make repairs, longstanding repairs to homes that will pay dividends on the back end. So the council, I believe, would need access to people who are in arrears and who go down to TCA month after month for help with bill payments, because it would be a better investment for us to repair the hole in their floor as opposed to continuing helping them pay an inflated energy utility bill.
Mr. Willard, thank you. Mr. Cottin?
Unfortunately, I helped Energy with Drew Kingston House to create the Smart, Energy Smart program. I didn't realize that only 8% went toward low-income people because I sign up the elderly and a lot of low-income people. As a council member, I would look at that program and redesign it to make sure that we tilt it toward the elderly and the low-income. Also, if you're a council member, I would make sure that we secure the funds to weatherize everybody's homes, the elderly especially. There are community development block grant funds available. I have participated in that program, weatherized homes, fix homes for the renter because of the client, I mean, the resident that's living there. So we would look at doing programs that could help the low-income, that will help the elderly, like weatherization, solar energy, the Smart program, the Energy Smart program, repairing homes, make sure that the people that are living there, that we can repair their homes. I don't care if it's a renter, because there are funds available for renters to repair rental homes, too.
Thank you, Mr. Cottin. Marvin Manning?
Yes, so as a pastor, I'm always looking at things and saying, that thing may be good, but can we do better? So the Energy Smart program is good, but we can do better. We can do better by making sure that since the Energy Smart program doesn't have a certain number of residents that are required to be enrolled in the program, we can set a standard and say, there must be a number of people that are absolutely required to be enrolled in the program, and then make sure that we reach that benchmark. Secondly, let's connect an indoor air quality standard to our Healthy Home Ordinance. People have homes that have stoves that are leaking gas, furnaces that are leaking gas, water heaters that are leaking gas. This creates, we need to make sure that the standard of the quality of air is reached so that if it's not, they've got to replace those appliances with electrical appliances that are no longer affecting the air quality within that home. This will be better for all of us and especially better for low-income people. And let's make sure there's language justice. Let's make sure with built into that Energy Smart program, we're reaching people that only speak Spanish, reaching people that only speak Vietnamese, and people that are disabled.
Thank you, Reverend Manning. Ms. Foster?
Sorry, y'all, I'm not a preacher, but I'll try to match the energy. I'm going to talk about housing again, because as an economist and an economic developer, I think this is where a lot of our affordability problems start and end. We're not reaching low-income residents with the Energy Smart program right now because we are not reaching renters. Right now, your landlord must sign off, thank you, on your participation in this program for your home. No renter is able to enroll themselves without their landlord's permission. We can tie this to the Healthy Homes Ordinance, especially when an inspector from the city is coming in to make sure that compliance is being met, to offer a free consultation with Entergy Smart, and to get people enrolled. This is a great way to get all of our people on board and reach a much larger portion of our city, especially people who may not have trust in this system. Free things do sound too good to be true to a lot of folks, and if you are an energy-burdened resident, if you are a housing-burdened resident, I want to make sure we are building the trust necessary to let people open their doors to this program, and that comes with real work, not just from Energy, but from your city councilors as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Foster. Mr. Kimball?
So I think the big issue that we've got to tackle especially is, we've got to get the word out, and we've got lovely people back here from the Office of Resiliency, and their funding is basically about to get cut by our federal government, because most of their funding comes from federal grants, and that's what most of our resilience programs in the city come from, is federal grants. And with the hostile state and federal administration, they're not going to have a lot of power to come out. We have to fund that resilient line item in the budget going forward to make sure that these people have more people on the ground, can get out to our community centers, get out to talk to people, because really, knowledge is power right now. And we've talked about renters, low-income people, our senior citizens that, you know, may not be technologically inclined. We have so many barriers of entry to getting into that, and that is a huge step to getting that out and making that happen. And then also, we've got to invest in a climate corps for our youth, because we've got to invest this Energy Smart money into building jobs that go forward where people can register and not have a profit incentive for a contractor to come out and come fix something or weatherize something on their homes. But we can get job training for young people, and then we can also get people fixed up in their house to help weatherize and be better on their energy efficiency. So there's a lot of things that we can do, but really, the funding thing within the city is what we've got to fund going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Reverend Bell?
First, we have to stop the shut-off of energy and gas to elderly people. Sometime when the elderly person called me, I'd bring them down to TCA to get help. But we have to go into their homes and make sure that there are weather strips of the windows, the doors, to help the elderly. When they call, I go. I don't make no excuse. Thank God for TCA to help a lot of them, but we have to help the elders as far as the low-income people. They're struggling. Stop the shut-off and work with them and do a payment plan or some type of program to get them back on their feet, because everybody's struggling every now and then. So you have to help them. So you've got to have a program, putting money out to the city for the elderly and for the program to help them get back on their feet. A lot of money is spent on waste. Like I said, I'm not in a race for the money, for the community. I have a voice that you will never shut up, elected or not. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Christmas?
Okay, so I just want to say, I don't know where the separation of divide came from when it comes to renters and homeowners. I don't know where it came from. But everybody wants the right to live in a quality of life and affordable energy. So I want to kind of break that down and cut that right now, just because that's a rhetoric that's used to separate people, and it's not okay. We all deserve that. Landlords need to be required to enroll in the Energy Smart program. That way renters do have the right, like Ms. Kelsey said. Homeowners and renters especially should have the right to enroll in that. They should have the right for that. The one thing I want to point out is I want to make it easier for residents to get the information. I believe one of the candidates already stated that it's hard for them to get the information. We have a lot of elderly in the Lower Ninth Ward in New Orleans East, but they can't get that information. My grandmother's 76 years old. She can't get that information. I have to get it for her. So I want to propose and implement a working group for Energy to come in, meet with Energy on a regular basis, and go in the community, canvass the area, find out who needs to help. And when we talk to them, we can get them on the path to owning, I'm sorry, better energy and get them on the path for grants and incentives.
Thank you, Ms. Christmas. Mr. Roberts?
Good afternoon, community. So I'm a Marine of 21 years, recently retired. The reason I share this is because my daughter asked me, what do I do now? So I'm a community organizer, and I'm an advocate for the community. I spend a lot of my time talking to residents, talking to neighbors, and connecting them to nonprofits and advocacy programs that help with renter assistance, energy bill assistance because the rates are high. We have to look into programs that are going to help our, New Orleans is 300 years old. I own a house in the Marineria area. It has the old weatherboarding, the floors are that old wood. I have to make sure I put up cameras so people don't come steal the wood off the floor. But we have to look at the programs that are going to help our residents weatherize and retrofit their homes to be energy-efficient. If we're not doing that, we're not helping our residents. If we're not regulating, if we're not doing clear regulation when it comes to energy, we're not helping our taxpayers. Clear oversight of energy has to be done. If you look at my campaign platform, we talk about doing an efficiency audit starting on day one, pulling the history of records of everything that they have already done, and also starting a new one if need be and holding energy accountable and making sure that our people can live in New Orleans and pay their rent at the same time. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, thank you. Mr. Morgan?
This issue will require a multi-tier solution. In District E, there is no energy location within the district. For someone that lives in our district that does not have access to transportation, what would require three buses to get to Energy? That's unacceptable. And for many of our citizens in District E who don't have the own personal vehicle, who rely on our regional transit authority, we need to put the resources in the community so that they can reach it. If we wonder why not many of our low-income residents access these programs, it's because the programs are out of reach. So that's first of all, putting a facility in our district so that the members of District E, the residents of District E can access it. Second of all, that's reaching our renters. Right now, a third of properties in New Orleans East are for sale, and those are landlords who are taking money out of our community and not investing it back into our community and leaving voters left with the bill. We have to address that. We have to address the landlords in our district, and then we have to provide assistance to our homeowners. So again, it will take a multi-tier solution to this problem.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Nguyen?
So we all know that too many of our residents use a large portion of their salary just to keep the lights on because of the energy bill. So a couple of thoughts I wanted to add to this conversation is to look at, I know many of us talked about the Energy Smart program and then weatherization, but we've got to make sure that the program is working for the family and the individuals, and that they are actually showing a cost-saving. So accountability is also very key to this program. But I also wanted to mention about the Healthy Home. I'm proposing to amend the Healthy Home to require the landlord to make energy upgrades to their rentals. So in that way, our renters could actually benefit from the upgrade of energy and reduce their bill. Many of us talked about community outreach and educating our public, our community about it. When I was in office, I really believed District E had the innovative engagement. We were on Facebook Live, in person, I was at senior homes, I was at senior program, wherever where people were at, I was there. This isn't about just keeping the light on. This is not fair. No one should have to decide to either do grocery or to use their AC in 100-degree heat like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baptiste?
Energy, energy. I think, one, the city council should have a relief program for the homeowners, and I'll tell you how we pay for it. Energy, when we look, our lights go out, and it don't even have to be a storm, our lights go off. So we've got to start finding energy. We've got to hold energy accountable. Let's talk about it. Most people don't want to hold them accountable because some of them get those big donations, and they say they don't get it, but they get it through family members. So at the end of the day, one will be a relief program, holding energy, making sure they're regulating, and if they're not doing the job, energy, I think we should bring other companies here. We should bring competitors and deal with energy, and then we'll stop the nepotism, the crony rizm, and the favoritism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Ms. Hanau?
I believe the question was, how could we make energy efficiency more cost savings for low-income families? And, you know, I don't know if anybody, most people know this, I guess, that 6% is what people pay on a national average. We pay about 25%, and that is absolutely insane. We pay about 25%, and that is absolutely insane. I would push for targeted outreach, and mostly to renters, because we're losing a lot of citizens, and I don't think people realize that a lot of people that we're losing are renters. And whether you, however you feel on the side of the scale, if you're a homeowner or you're a renter, that's a huge tax base. So I always look at the big picture of things, and when I'm looking at the big picture, if all of our renters, several renters are leaving, and we're taking in less income, we have a budgeting problem. So it's not just about the lights. So we have to make sure that we hold landlords accountable to make sure that they also get these efficiencies in all their rental properties. Thank you.
Reverend Hanau, if I can ask you to stay at the mic, please?
Yes, you may.
Time is being allowed for a third question, and we're going to go the opposite direction.
Okay.
This question to all of our council member candidates. What will you do to ensure that council remains independent, transparent, and accountable to the public, not beholden to the companies it regulates, Entergy New Orleans and Delta Utilities? Again, you have one minute to respond.
The very first thing I want to do with Entergy is, I want to make sure that they are accountability-based. I want to make sure that they're so transparent that the budget is tied into whatever it is that they want done. So I want to set benchmarks ahead of time. So if they, and we would measure everything, so like we measure outages, and if they don't make that benchmark, we get money back. But more importantly, I want to definitely make sure that it's, it should be against the law, in my opinion, for candidates to receive any money whatsoever for an entity that it regulates. That's a direct conflict of interest, and we all suffer from it. So that's the very first thing, that to me should be against the law.
Thank you. Mr. Baptiste?
Well, Mr. Baptiste, number one, y'all know me from being on the news, so I'm going to hold every council member accountable. And if they're not doing it, I'm taking it to the public. I'm calling them out. I'm going to let the people know who's selling them out, who's not telling the truth, because we need justice on that council. We have looked at council members playing games with energy because they're their friends. But Belinda Noonie Man-Baptiste is not coming to play. He coming to deal with them. Y'all know I did the recall, and I recall one of them up there if they ain't doing their job, because the people are hurting, they're suffering, and they're tired of these games. So I'm going to hold them accountable, and if I got to put the handcuffs on them myself, I would. They going to jail.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Just to add on to the comments, and I agree with Lanani that as a council member, we should not be receiving any contribution from Entergy or any related organization that works with them. So in that way, we could truly demonstrate our independence to the public. But I also want to feel like we need to have open dialogues. When you have open dialogue, you learn from each other. And then my meeting is always to the public, so holding public meeting, being accountable, and transparency is something that I did for four years that I was in office, but also addressing a lot of the things that we say we're going to do. I know when I met with the Alliance, we talked about a lot of the ordinance that was passed decades ago. We need to make sure that whatever we say we're going to do, that we do follow up with Entergy, particularly understanding what access do we have here? What are we on? We don't even know what we own here in New Orleans, and we've got to make sure that that is shared to the public. So my commitment is to continue to be open, transparent, and accountable to the public.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you for that question. I will echo my fellow candidates. No one seeking office on the city council, or anyone currently on the city council, should be taking money from entities that they regulate. That's a direct conflict of interest, and that signals that they are no longer on the side of the people that they're elected to support. In addition to that, we should have a public-facing dashboard to where all of our residents can keep track of the things that are going on in chambers, and that energy, and a beautiful building down on Portras, right? We want to make sure that everyone, everything that they commit to, that they are being held to that standard.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Roberts?
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Yes, of course. What will you do to ensure that council remains independent, transparent, and accountable to the public, not beholden to the companies it regulates, Entergy New Orleans and Delta Utilities?
Thank you. Thank you. Do not accept money from any company that you're supposed to be regulating. Step one. Number two, my campaign has been talking about it since day one, doing an efficiency audit. There's wasteful spending going on in the city, and it has to be captured, and we've got to rectify it now, not later. So doing an efficiency audit, and then also, community advocacy groups. Bringing our youth, our taxpayers, working families, business owners to the table on a weekly, monthly, however often they want to meet. So that way, if they can't make it to the city council meetings because they're working, or the District E Town Hall meetings, their information is already captured, their concerns are already captured, and we're addressing those issues when we meet at Town Hall and we meet when we have our council meetings. So that way, we are properly addressing the issues of the community. So proper regulation, oversight of energy, making sure the voices are heard, and not accepting money from anybody that we're supposed to be regulating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Ms. Christmas?
All right, so first, I want to talk about, stop taking money from them. Once we have a utility company and a politician and a council member taking money from a utility company, the lines tend to get blurred, because now we forget who we represent. Are we representing our people that we had ran for initially, or are we representing that utility company? So the lines tend to get blurred. So we have to remember why we are in office in the first place. Second thing is, I want to say, stop hitting cost fees. We need to be more transparent. We need to stop bearing the burden of for-profit systems. We do this constantly. These big business companies always, we bear the burden that, we take the hit of that. So we need to stop doing that. Second thing is transparency. Remember, I mentioned a working group where we need to sit in with these meetings and talk about it, and we need to sit in and say, "Hey, what's going on? We need to allocate the money." We need to sit in and say, "Where is this money going?" That way, we can report it back to the people, and we can find out what's going on, being transparent. Audit them and also hold them accountable. Once again, I keep saying, hold these people accountable. Council members, representatives, elected officials, hold everybody accountable, because when we don't, we tend to forget who we represent. We need to kick big businesses out, for-profit systems out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christmas. Reverend Bell?
Section 2 slash 784 been already broken in this campaign. Come on. City council got to stop paying paid actors to get a bill passed. They got to stop the backdoor meeting before the meeting. And let me tell you, I will call them out. If it's something that hurt the public, I will vote no. I don't go with no lobbyists to tell me how to vote. I will not take backdoor money just to pass the bill to the community. That's have to stop. City Hall need to get their act together and start helping the community and stop hurting the community, because each time they pass the bill, it's hurt the community. It hurt the old lady who's trying to struggle. It hurt the working person that barely making it. So my first day in office, no backdoor deals, no lobbyists. Stay out the office or get arrested. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Bell. Mr. Kimbrel?
So I advocate for banning people from taking personal donations from these groups, PACs and super PACs, because we have people in this campaign right now that have taken money from Entergy through PACs and say they don't have any bias towards that. Also, the big issue is, we have to get money completely out of politics in this city, because right now, it's becoming a contest of who has the most money and who can get out in front of people. It's not a battle of ideas and how to move the city forward. It's all about who can raise the most money. The frontrunner in this, in the mayoral election, has raised $2 million, which is more than our congressman raised in the last election cycle, because that's what's really dominating right now, is who has the most money and not who's going to bring ideas to the table that's going to move the city forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kimbrel. Ms. Foster?
I think it is clear that there is no place in city council for campaign donations from Entergy or from PACs. That has got to stop. I also want to point out that right now, when the city council chooses to raise your energy rates, they're only doing so based on the quarterly shareholder reports that Entergy submits. That is not sufficient financial documentation. I have a background in public finance. I want to see your books. As your regulator, that is my right. I also want to make sure that we are rebidding the opportunity to do a performance audit on Entergy. This was bid out once, and no local firm would touch it. Imagine what a chilling effect that monopoly has on our right to understand our Entergy utility in this city. We can do better. I think we have got to try again. We deserve to be aware of what is happening on the management and financial side at Entergy as their regulator. That is what regulation is.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Foster. Reverend Manning?
I want to make it very clear that I'm very proud of my organization, the Greater New Orleans Interfaith Climate Coalition, that fought for an ordinance that made it illegal for any candidate running for office to accept campaign contributions from any entity that it regulates. So it's already on the books against the law. We have to enforce it. If any candidate breaks the law, there is a fine or there is jail time. We must enforce that. Secondly, we must close the loopholes, because one of my opponents, and it wasn't Kenneth Cudno, had the CEO of Entergy at his first fundraiser. That should be illegal. But it wasn't illegal for her to give a donation, but it was illegal for her lawyers, her PACs, and lobbyists to give money. It should be illegal for any lawyers, PACs, or lobbyists to give any money that is from any entity that the city council is charged to regulate. Final, that should be the solution, so that no money interferes with the true regulation of our utilities.
Thank you, Reverend Manning. Mr. Cudno?
Transparency and accountability is what I stand on. I truly believe in it. We need to stop this pay-to-play process in every election, buying endorsements, collecting money, not just from Entergy, Delta, but climate control companies, all major corporations that is involved in our daily life. We should not accept money. And I wish we would do this, and I wish the people would stop voting for people that is out here buying votes, buying for endorsement, and collecting money from corporations and Entergy and Delta and climate control companies. All of these things is affecting them, because when they accept that money, they have to dance to the music of those people. I want to dance to the music of the people, the voice of the people. I refuse to sell my soul, my morals, and my values just so I could get a donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cudno. Mr. Willitt?
I think on this issue, the most important thing is that we elect good leadership, good honest leadership onto the city council. One of the biggest issues here is going to be transparency. I believe most of the city of New Orleans are not familiar with how the utility committee operates, don't understand the process that they use with the docket system, and how to intervene, and how they can show up and talk in a utilities committee meeting. So I think we have to bridge that gap. We have to go out into the community to explain that process, and we have to invite them to show up to those utility committee meetings. Beyond that, I would say that we have to actually have a competitive bid process for the utility consultants that the city council uses, because I know there's been a lot of issue on that front, too. So we have to make sure that that process is open and transparent as well. And so I guess that's how I would respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willitt. Mr. Hill?
I was actually going to say something different until Reverend showed me what the ordinance actually is. And in one of the pages of the ordinance, it says, "How to file the complaint," how we would file the complaint. Is there anybody in this room that is going to file a complaint against the mayoral candidates that have taken money from there? Anybody? I don't think so. That's not going to happen. Once again, I'm telling you, we cannot regulate these machines. We have to bust them up. And obviously, I'm not going to be getting any donations from Entergy anytime soon, but I'm not going to take anything from anybody that is Delta or any other one. But I may just happen to file a complaint if nobody else in this room will do so, because we need leadership to do something about this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Murrow?
So first off, I don't accept money from corporate entities, or PACs, or any businesses that make money off of the services that we regulate. As Pastor Manning mentioned, four years ago when I ran for this office, I received in the letter, in the mail, saying, "You cannot accept money from anything that you regulate," right? Clearly, it's not being enforced. The thing that I haven't heard up here is the fact that we live in an oligarchy right now. Ever since Citizens United was passed, it allows corporations to take over our elections. We need a public integrity system, probably an election commission would be great, that can oversee and make sure that we are able to do those reports against people that are supposed to be held liable. But number two, we need to remove the profit incentive. These people will not make money unless things are municipalized and actually public goods and services, rather than cash cows for their investors. So at the end of the day, we need to move money out of politics, and that means putting power into your hands to make sure that you're able to hold these people accountable, just as much as any, you know, type of enforcement that's happening right now. Thank you.
Ms. Mossing?
I don't know if there are any Ted Lasso fans out there, but I like to live by this idea that it's important to stay curious, and I feel like maybe our city council has lost some of that over the last few years when it comes to Entergy. So I've heard a couple of these ideas mentioned, and I think that shows that we're all on the right track, right? But making sure that we are consistently bringing Entergy to the table. We have a utilities committee. We should be hosting meetings every month. We should be doing that regularly. It shouldn't be on a whim. It shouldn't only be when a problem arises. We should be regularly making sure that that utility is interfacing with the public. Another thing that I would like to do is, again, I heard this idea earlier, to make sure that we are revisiting who our consultants are, and finding a consultant that isn't just there because they've been doing the same job for 45 years, but because they are able to really meet the needs of New Orleanians and promote positive ways for us to spend fine money through programs like the Community Solar Proposal that's been on the table for a while. And then beyond that, we need to make sure that our regulations have real teeth. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I think everybody up here has mentioned the same thing, that we, it is actually a law that we, as candidates and once we're council members, cannot take money from Entergy or Delta, and we shouldn't be taking them from lobbyists or anyone else that is affiliated with anything that we regulate. So we need to make sure that that law is enforced. We need to make sure that it's accessible to you to report, and that people are held accountable. That's for sure. The other thing I just want to briefly touch on is, I know people have also said this, is that we need to make sure that we're having these consistent meetings every month that we are having these utility meetings. But we also need to make it easier for you all to understand. It's hard enough for us to understand how to read these dockets and how they work, so we need to make sure that we, as council members, and our staff are all educated on how to read these things, and then how to communicate that to you going forward. That way, it's clear and consistent language, so you're able to understand and engage with the council on these issues, because it is a unique power that this council has to regulate our utilities, and we need to make sure that we're letting you have a voice in that as well.
All right, thank you so much. So we have passed the third round of questioning. We are now at a round that goes just a little bit quicker. This is our lightning round, where we will receive only a yes or no answer to the questions that you get. And we're going to start, again, with Ms. McCarron down here. Again, both these questions you get, yes or no. The first question, as a council member, would you commit to banning utility disconnections for families who can't afford to pay their bills?
Yes.
And as a council member, do you support requiring Entergy to pay an outage credit to customers when there are frequent or prolonged outages?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Ms. Mossing. Same question to you. Do you need me to repeat that? As a council member, would you commit to banning utility disconnections for families who can't afford to pay their bills, and do you support requiring Entergy to pay an outage credit to customers when there are frequent or prolonged outages?
Yes, and yes.
Thank you. Mr. Murrow? Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Hell, yes and yeah. Can I say hell in a church?
I don't know.
Yes, to both of them.
Okay. Mr. Hill.
Yes and yes.
Okay. There we go. Mr. Willard?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Cudno?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes and 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 yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Thank you all for your answers. We're now at the portion where I believe we're doing audience Q and A.
We have one, an audience question.
Okay. We do have a question that is from the audience, and this question will go to each of our candidates. And again, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it is 60 seconds still to respond. So that question, "The city council does not govern in isolation from the mayor and the governor and state legislature. What is your experience in working with other governing entities to get the agenda of the city council done effectively? And how will you work with other elected officials?" We can start here, Mr. Willard. One minute to respond.
Well, I have six years of that experience, so I think it would best serve me on the city council. Currently, I'm the chairperson of the House Democratic Caucus. I assumed that position at the same time Governor Landry went into office, at the same time that the legislature went, supermajority in both chambers. So I know how to work with people who fundamentally disagree with me for the purpose of solving problems. And I would bring that same experience and that same energy into City Hall, and also utilize the relationships that I do have in Baton Rouge to best serve the city of New Orleans. I think it's useful when you actually have a tangible solution, that you can work with other groups and other stakeholders to identify how to actually accomplish the goal. There are so many problems in the city of New Orleans right now. We all may have different ideas of how to solve the problem, but we all should have the common solution in mind. And so we have to figure out how to make the sausage while working toward the end result, which is actually the sausage.
Mr. Willard, thank you. Mr. Hill.
All right. Well, I'm not an elected official yet. I'm an operations manager. I make machines work better. Every day, I deal with people that do not agree. But every day, I manage to make it happen. Conversation. Communication. That's how we get things done. If I want what I want, and that's to get the Sewager Water Board dissolved and moved under Public Works, I'm going to need to work with the state reps. I'm going to need to work with the governor. If we want to bust up Entergy, we're going to need our help from the governor as well. We're going to need some help from the state legislature. But I think everybody is on the same page, that something needs to be done. And sometimes, these bold things that I'm proposing may seem like a lot, may seem a little bit scary. But when we break it down into small pieces, we can get this done quickly and easily.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ms. Christmas.
Yes, I can.
This question from our audience, "The city council does not govern in isolation from the mayor, the governor, and state legislature. So what is your experience in working with other governing entities to get the agenda of the city council done effectively? And how will you work with other elected officials?"
Well, my experience has been bad dealing with government. I think that's why we're all running. But my experience is going to city council meetings, advocating, working with community-based organizations, talking for them, being their voice, well, being the voice of reason, talking with city council members at the forefront when there's stuff going on. We just recently did that with Stop the Grain Train, where we talked to the port, we talked to city council. I've talked on behalf of a bunch of community-based organizations. So that's my experience, because I deal with the people, I talk to them, and that's how I handle government. What was the second part of the question?
"How will you work with other elected officials?"
It's simple. I think we have to remember, again, why we are in office. We have to get our egos out of this. We remember why we got in office in the first place. It was for the people, not our egos, not who we like or who we don't like. Remember why we got in office, the underlying agenda, which is to help the people. And if we put the people first, profit out of the system, people first always, I think we'll go far.
Thank you so much. Ms. Christmas. Reverend Bell? Would you like me to repeat the question? Thank you.
As a retired veteran with 35 years, and that is certified EOC, and as a member of the ACLU, which we send letters to Troy Carter, to Bill Cassidy, and I do get answers back stacked back, because we fight for the people. When the ACLU send me to send to our officials in Washington, they do answer back, and I hold them for answer back of the stuff that we fight for your rights. As the military trained me to be a EOC, I will fight for your equal rights. Nobody get discriminated, race, tree, or color. I have five organization I work through with the American Legion. I help the veterans get their claim, because I'm a certified duty-serving officer. I will bring everybody to the roundtable to discuss how to better the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Murrell.
So one of the things that we have to understand is that state power, whether that's from the federal government, from Louisiana, or from the executive branch here in the city of New Orleans, they can't operate without the people living in a civil society. I believe very generally that the people, particularly the working-class people who make the wealth of the city and of this country, have a lot more power once they're organized. And so I fully advocate for unionization of as many industries as we can get, and that we should start organizing towards general strikes, or the ability to have targeted Wildcat strikes, so that we can actually force politicians to represent the interests of the people that they are elected to represent. As a more focused leader on solutions rather than processes, I'm a project manager, and I've been a senior engineer for several years, almost to a decade now. And I work with a lot of people that don't get along or don't see eye to eye, but ultimately, you have to work towards what you do find in common. And it's finding that unity through a shared vision that you're able to move forward. But at the end of the day, I won't sacrifice my principles in order to represent the people best. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mossing.
I professionally wrangle about 113-year-olds all day. And I don't know if you guys have 13-year-olds in your lives, but there's not a much more myopic or scattered group of humans present on planet Earth. But that being said, one thing that we do teach them all the time is that we don't solve problems by fighting, right? So a big part of what I work with kids on every day is how do we come to the table and find win-win solutions for whatever our problem might be? And sometimes, they're really dumb, and sometimes, they're really serious. But no matter what, we can always be cooperative, kind, peaceful, respectful, and safe. And just relying on this same set of principles should get us pretty far. Also, just as a civics teacher, I abide by the powers of federalism. We have clear differentiation in the way that our government should work together, and the ways that their powers should be separated. And it is important that we advocate for those as leaders. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. McCarron.
So I think one thing that we can all agree on in this room and up here is that the current dysfunction that we're seeing is not working. It's not how we need to govern. So the good thing for me is that, because I've worked for Councilmember Giurissa for the last three years full-time, I've been able to build relationships with our current New Orleans delegation. I've been endorsed by several of those members, as well as our school board and other members. So I've had the opportunity to work with these people and earn these relationships with them. I've had, I've been able to earn relationships with everybody on this stage up here, and that's during the campaign. So I know how to work together, and that's what we need in this next council and this next administration going forward. We've got to be able to all come together in New Orleans, the mayor and the council. We need to be able to go up to Baton Rouge together and fight with our legislators to get things done for New Orleans. That is what we do. We don't have that right now. The current council has not been included in decisions that happen up in Baton Rouge, and that's because the mayor's administration has told us not to. That has to stop. We've got to all be up in Baton Rouge and our federal partners together.
All right. Ms. McCarron, thank you. Ms. Kimbrel? I'll read the question again. "The city council does not govern in isolation from the mayor, governor, and state legislature. What is your experience in working with other governing entities to get to the agenda of the city council done effectively? And how will you work with other elected officials?"
So as a collaborative person, as a project manager for a construction company, I work for, with owners and our subcontractors every day to fix problems and make things happen. Also, in uniform, as an Army veteran, I've worked with local, state, federal, and international officials to get things done, especially during our COVID-19 pandemic, our multiple hurricane responses, deployments overseas, and humanitarian missions in South America. So I know what it takes to work with people that may even not speak your own language. And I think that also, too, at the state and local level, you know, from my accent, y'all could probably tell I wasn't born in charity hospital. And I understand that the divide between urban and rural exists, and I understand how to bridge that gap between the two things, because there are a lot of shared problems that we have as a state in Louisiana that need to get fixed and are shared across, not just here in New Orleans, or here in a big municipality, but are also in the countryside that need to get fixed. And I am fully prepared to work with any individual that wants to come to the table and bring a solution and make things better.
Ms. Kimbrel, thank you. Ms. Foster.
I've had the opportunity to work collaboratively, not just with our state delegation, but our federal delegation, both in my role at Algiro's Economic Development Foundation, but also as the vice president of the Flood Protection Authority on the West Bank. So we've been able to secure crucial dollars to keep our communities dry and safe, and to make sure our small businesses are supported. I'm going to tell you, those rooms aren't always easy ones to be in, especially as a New Orleanian. And these skills that we're all talking about right now, collaboration, listening, and leading with our values, are going to become more crucial than ever as we go into a new term with a not always friendly state and federal government. It is imperative that we elect people that can work together, can listen, and can put you first, because you need a fighter in your city so that you can have a fighter at the state and at the federal level.
Thank you. Ms. Hennell.
I'm actually running against Mr. Baptiste, and oftentimes, I pick him up and bring him where he needs to go. So we definitely work together. About a month ago, I had to call on Helena and also JP to help me out with the issue we were having in District D, and because they're both our large candidates, and they were, you know, Johnny on the spot. I've negotiated contracts with for-profit, nonprofit, and Fortune 500 companies, and I'm often the only woman and woman of color in the room. I'm used to being told no, often. And I believe that communication and negotiation is a soft skill that I definitely possess. You will not see me walk in a room that I don't hug everybody, that whether I'm running against you or not, because it's New Orleans, and I believe that that's the way it's supposed to be. So we have to, I see us as one big family. I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baptiste.
Well, Mr. Baptiste have worked with everybody on the federal level, on the state level, and with the city council. I help a lot of people dearly, and I be calling them. Matt Willard, I call his phone like 99 times, but he do call me back, he get it done. So I want to shout Matt out for all the work he do in the community. But I'm a, I got a proven track record, and I got real leadership. And I'm stubborn. I'm bold. They gonna answer the phone, we gonna get all in one room and make it happen. And one thing I am, one thing I plan to do when I win this council race, is to unify the council, because we are not unified. And when the TERRACE Act happened, if y'all saw what happened in the TERRACE Act, nobody didn't know nothing. Nobody. When that criminal, well, I meant when that TERRACE Act happened, the Police Justice Foundation, FBI, nobody know nothing. So it's time for us to shine. It's time for young people to get up there, shine, and bring it to the council, and I'm going to bring leadership, I'm going to bring justice, and I'm coming with it. And if I don't do my job, y'all fire me or recall me.
Thank you. Ms. Win.
So before I ran for office in 2017, I actually ran a nonprofit organization. So I had to work with federal government, federal leaders, state leaders, and city leaders to really bring resources to the community. And with those experience, when I got elected, I was able to secure $5 million for Lincoln Beach, selected the vendor for the Six Flack site, the former Six Flack in the East, where it sat for since Katrina, secure $3.5 million for Richard Lee Playground in the Low Nine, $2.5 million renovation for Community Center in the East off of Wilson and Chef, over $1 million to expand walking paths in our neighborhood, secure a CEA for St. Colva to create a wetland and walking trail, secure over $30 million for street improvement in District E, and I coordinated during COVID-19 to make sure that people in the District E had resources. And John Bell Edwards actually participated in our campaign to take the shot.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Win. Mr. Morgan.
While I have not yet served in the elected office, as an educator and a former director at Orleans Parish Juvenile Court, I'm no stranger to working with a vast delegation. When servicing the youth here in our city, that takes a team effort, all right? That takes individuals from multiple agencies, both local and on state level, to make sure that we are providing the services that our youth need and need to thrive. So I'm no stranger to working in a room with people across the aisle and bringing individuals together so that we can better serve the community. So again, I will take the skill set that I have learned with negotiating with rivals in our community to help sustain community violence, and take that same hard work, that same knowledge I've learned there, and take it to the council to make sure that we all are working collectively for the people of New Orleans.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Roberts.
Afternoon, community. I don't know if y'all noticed, but every conversation I start, I start by greeting the community, because I'm a community organizer. I'm used to reaching across the table and working with community, listen to the voices of the community. I say that because it's going to take community. I'm asking for the largest tax basin in our city to rally behind me so we can organize and move forward in the purpose of moving District E forward with New Orleans. My background is in the military. The last job I did was IG, Inspector General. I worked across multiple institutions, multiple platforms, to make sure that the voices of military personnel was properly being taken care of and properly being heard. Right now, my Inspector General office is being minimized, I guess that's the word I want to use, on the federal level, to take away that voice for service members and community members that want to make sure that justice is being served. So I'm used to working with different organizations, not as a career politician, but as a community member and as a Marine. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Cudno.
I have 30 years of government experience. I am the only candidate in Division Two with government experience. At age 27, I was appointed to the governor's office as a liaison to the governor. So I learned these skills of collaboration, putting together public and private partnerships, and working and networking at an early age. I had to work with senators, representatives, mayor, Dutchy, and I used to talk all the time back then. But I was just 27 years old, remember that. I have been the deputy director of Elder Affairs for the city of Boston, where I gave out millions of dollars to different organizations. I put together the team that brought the Walmart here, and we have managed to work with the city and different public and private corporation, and we was able to secure $360 million from the sales taxes at Walmart to build the St. Thomas Housing Development. I helped secure $20 million working with the late Phyllis Landry to put up the Mahalia Jackson School. You have to be able to network and work with people in order to bring that type of money for the projects.
Thank you, Mr. Cudno. And Reverend Manning.
Yeah, so I've been a community organizer with together in New Orleans for a long time. Our church, the Broadmoor Community Church, was the first community lighthouse in the city, where we have solar panels and batteries on our church. In order to do that, we brought together all community leaders, including our congressman, Troy Carter, to put in money to get that project done. We brought together city leaders. And on the day of the ribbon cutting for that community lighthouse, we weren't even sure that these city leaders, who could not stand each other, were even going to show up. But by the grace of God and through relationship building, they showed up. They still couldn't stand each other, but they showed up. That's what I do. I'm a bridge builder and not a bridge burner. It's all about building relationship, and at this time in our city, we need unity and not division.
Thank you so much. And this completes all of our Q and A for the evening. And as we round out to the last portion of our forum, we're going to ask each of the candidates to give 30 seconds to make their final statements. And we begin this time with Ms. Hennell. 30 seconds.
Not 60.
60, yes. Not 60?
Not 60 seconds. Unfortunately, due to time, 30 seconds. Final closing statement.
Okay. When I was a kid, I was about seven years old, I remember coming home, and my mom said we're going to play a game. She said you can't touch the light switches. She says if you do, that means you lose. So we camped, and we told ghost stories, and we cooked on my brother's Boy Scout little stove. And I really wanted to use my Easy-Bake Oven, but my mom told me that if we use that, that would take away from the camping experience. It wasn't until years later that I realized that our lights weren't on. I had no idea. Ooh, I got a little emotional thinking about that. My platform is about accountability. It's about transparency. It's about affordability, because I don't want any family to have to wonder or to lie about whether or not their lights are on. I'm Le'lani Hino. I'm running for city council, District D. It's about affordability, because I don't want any family to have to wonder or to lie about whether or not their lights are on. I'm Leila Nihino. I'm running for city council, District D. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Baptiste? 30 seconds.
First of all, I want to thank y'all for inviting me here. My name, Beldon Baptiste, number 43 on the ballot. What I want y'all to know, soon I'm elected, I'm coming at Energy and Delta Utilities. I'm coming at them because they have got away with too much. I want you to know I'll fight, I'll advocate for you, I'll stand for you. And one thing, I won't let you down. I'm not for sale, I'm not bought and paid for. I'm coming there to get real results. I'm not a polished politician, I'm not going to give you a broken promise. 30 years I have been fighting in the community, look me up. Thank y'all, God bless.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Baptiste. Ms. Wynn? 30 seconds.
Well, again, thank you so much for tonight. Again, my name is Cindy Wynn. I am running in the city council, District E. And listen, you know, I was very blessed to have an opportunity to serve from 2018 to 22. We did a lot of work together. We still have beaucoup of work to get done, and that's why I'm running again, to make sure that those projects that impact District E happens in our community. This Saturday is early voting. I want to encourage all of you to make sure that you early vote. Please call your family and your friends, and if you have family, friends in District E and the Lower Nine, please ask them to consider a vote for Cindy Wynn, number 55. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Morgan?
I'm going to let you guys in on a quick secret. I was not groomed for this position, nor am the candidate that the party establishment wants. But I am the candidate that the community is called to serve. I am no stranger to hard work and working with this community. I have been there alongside my community members in some of the roughest times in District E, and I could, I plan to continue to fight for my community and for the citizens of District E, the Lower Nine, and the Waltons East. Again, my name is Willie Morgan. I am number 54 on the ballot, and I humbly ask for your support, and it was a pleasure and an honor to be here with you guys on tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Roberts?
Afternoon, community. Jonathan Anthony Roberts here, number 57 on the ballot, echoing that early voting starts on the 27th. It's time to hold energy accountable. I say all the time, the Lower Nine and District E, we have very beautiful people out there, and they have to turn our lights on. We don't ask for our lights to be turned on. If you drive to Slidell, you'll see that the lights are off on the interstate. It's time to hold them accountable. It's time to hold the city accountable. It's time to hold your elected officials accountable. Vote Jonathan Anthony Roberts, number 57. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kimbrel.
Thank y'all for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. Y'all could do all kinds of other things with me here. So I'm Jackson Kimbrel, I'm number 41 on the ballot, and I'm running for city council, District C. I fundamentally believe that reliable, affordable, and renewable energy is a human right in this city, and we have to make sure that it's insured, and I'm ready to fight for that. Our city council has continuously shirked their responsibility as the regulator of energy and now Delta Utilities to provide all of those things to our city, and I'm ready to fight for you. I appreciate y'all all being out here, and I hope to get your vote starting early voting on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Foster.
We've talked a lot about accountability tonight, and that's because right now, we live in a city where the cost of living is just too high for a quality of life that is too low. But if we're going to talk about accountability, I want to make sure everyone in the room tonight and everyone watching clocks the empty chairs, because regulating our utilities is a massive part of this job, and this is our job interview. You are hiring. I thank you all for having me. My name is Kelsey Foster. I'm running for District C, number 40 on your ballot.
Thank you. Reverend Manning?
I'm number 32 on the ballot. My name is Pastor Gregory Manning. Light is your right. You never deserve for your power to be shut off. Frankly, the city council has sold you out to Delta, has sold you out to Entergy New Orleans, and you do not deserve that. I will never sell you out. I will fight for you consistently and always. I will always be your advocate and never your adversary. Vote for me, Pastor Gregory Manning. I humbly ask for your vote. Know that a Manning in any shade is still a champion, and I will be your champion.
Thank you. Mr. Cutno?
I am not a preacher, but I truly believe that God has customized me for this position with my skills and knowledge of 30 years in government. It's up to you, the people, the voter, to make a decision for someone with experience, qualification, and not someone who you know by name or devote by name. We don't need this chaos. We don't need people who talk and talk and talk and give you lip service. We need a true leadership with the experience that have delivered real results. You could check the Walmart, you could check Mahalia Jackson, you could see it, you could feel it, real result. Kenny Cutno, number 31, for council at large, Division Two.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Cutno. Mr. Willard?
Thank you to the Alliance for Affordable Energy and Logan for putting this event together. My name is Matthew Willard, and I'm ready to be your next council member at large for Division One. For six years, I've proudly represented the city of New Orleans and the state legislature, and I prioritize problem-solving for issues we experience at home. Last year, I passed legislation to end estimated billing practices from Sewerage and Water Board. I passed legislation to make the Fortified Roof Grant Program a permanent program. I embrace the opportunity to be a hands-on regulator of our city's utility companies. I am asking for the opportunity to help push New Orleans in the right direction. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hill?
I'm not just asking for your vote. I'm asking for a mandate, mandate to go in and tear out these monopolies by their roots, to bring down your energy costs, to make this city more affordable. The things that I am proposing are bold, but each and every one of you have already thought about it before, and you also know we're not going to get anywhere if we just keep doing things the same way. We have to make these moves because you deserve it. So does your wallet.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
My name is Danielle Christmas. I'm running for New Orleans East and the Lower Ninth Ward. I'm running on the basis of being failed. I am the daughter of the wrongfully convicted. My father was convicted of murder when I was four months old, and I sat in the backseat of the car while he was arrested. He was sentenced to death row for 10 years. He had a trial that lasted less than 15 days. I'm running on the basis of being failed so often. I'm running because the justice system failed my father, they failed me, the education system failed me, and they failed him. And I'm tired of being failed. I'm running because the mom can't walk on the side of the street because there's no sidewalk, because it's a black property. I'm running because she runs a risk of being hit by a car because the street life doesn't work. I'm running for that child who's scared to go to jail because of a prison and pipeline system. I'm running because of those reasons. We need to change the face of government, progressive people in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christmas. Reverend Bell?
I'm Reverend Bell, number 47 on the ballot. My daughter Mae, 47, October 11, my sister's birthday. Glory to God. Let me tell you, City Hall, I don't like what I say, but I'm going to find the money. I'm going to get an independent order and find the money that been stolen from District E. And I have a verse, and my verse will be heard through City Hall, because it's time that we get back on the map and stop taking the money. I'm going to find the money. I want a scam. I will find the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Almost done. We're almost done. My name is Bob Morrell. I'm running for city council, District A, and I'm your choice to put people first. I have the community support as a community advocate and a grassroots organizer from organizations like Step Up and Vote, as well as the Democratic Socialists of America, where three years ago, I helped organize the Make Entergy Pay Campaign, and our demands are the same demands here tonight. And I'm so glad to see those demands being popularized, which is to stop residential bans, to stop rate increases, and to forgive debt going back to COVID. At the end of the day, money is what's corrupting our system, it's what's corrupting this political process, and it's up to you beyond election day to fight for democracy. Thank you, Bob Morrell.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Mossing?
My name is Alex Mossing, running for city council, District A, number 36 on the ballot. They say if you want something done, ask a busy person. I am teaching currently full-time. I have a cross-country team that I coach. I have two Girl Scout troops. I work for the Louisiana Department of Education reviewing social studies curriculum, and now I am running a campaign. I hadn't been planning this, but I felt compelled when I saw my friends and family and neighbors struggling with high costs of living in New Orleans, utility bills, rent, affordability in general, and I felt like I needed to stand up and be a voice for regular citizens. I hope I can earn your vote this October. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. McCarron?
Thank you so much to Alliance, and thank you to all of you for being here. I'm Amy McCarron, and I'm running for city council, District A, because like you, I love our city. I was born here, I was raised here, and now with my husband Ross, I'm raising, we're raising our six-year-old twins here. I've worked in restaurants and finance and now in public service, and I've earned every position, every position I've had. And now I'm asking to earn your vote on October 11 for this district council race for District A. I'm number 35 on your ballot. Again, it's Amy McCarron, number 35, and I hope to earn your vote this weekend at early voting and on October 11. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to thank all of our candidates for giving us, well, you can give a round of applause if you'd like. I'd like to thank all of our candidates for their measured responses, and of course, we're engaging with a lot of our citizens here who are concerned about energy and utilities. Your answers do matter in this race. And I would say something as moderator. Thank you so much for having me. When I come to these events, I'm not coming here as a news anchor, I'm just coming here as a resident of Uptown, and we need to know if my lights are going to get cut on or not.